Good evening. Welcome. Welcome to the November 7th, 2022, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right. First up tonight, under our Proclamation section, I have a proclamation declaring November as National Runaway Prevention Month. I will read this proclamation. I think we have Angie here.
Angie's here, yeah.
There you are. And I'll let you say a few words after I'm done. Whereas November is National Runaway Prevention Month, and whereas National Runaway Prevention Month began in 2002 and is presented each year by the National Runaway Safeline, federally designated national crisis and communication system for youths aged 12 to 21 who have run away, are considering leaving home, or experiencing homelessness, and whereas runaway youth are often expelled from their home, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at increased risk of falling, excuse me, at increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking, and whereas Payne County Youth Services is working to raise awareness, provide support, and offer resources for vulnerable young people in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I William Joyce do hereby proclaim November as National Runaway Prevention Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and encourage all citizens to appreciate the role that we can all play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people.
Thank you guys so much. Just a couple of things I wanted to add was that we're doing two events this month to raise awareness. Thursday is National Wear Green Day, so we're asking anybody that's willing to wear green and take pictures and send them to us. And then November 17th, here at the municipal building, we're having a candlelight vigil. I have it approved, I promise. And November 17th at 7:00, and it's National Shine a Light Night, so all across the country, people are doing vigils, they're putting green light bulbs in their businesses and homes just to raise awareness, so. Anybody that can join us, we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for the work that Payne County Youth Services does.
Appreciate it.
I don't have a proclamation on this, but I'll just note that several of us are wearing jeans here tonight to help support the United Way and their fundraising efforts. So, we're collecting money, the city staff, this whole week, I think, gets to wear jeans for a $20 donation, so thank you for helping support the United Way.
And some of us paid whether we have jeans on or not.
Yes, very good.[196.62][196.62](laughing) All right. Next up is Item 4, the Consent Docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent docket, please vote. Consent dockets approved with a vote of 5 to 0. Public hearings. Item 7, 7A, has received public comment regarding a request from Michael and Patty Crowley to close a portion of the right-of-way near 1206 South Duncan Street. This is CC-22-189. Kimberly, do we have good notice?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
All right. So tonight, the two items that I have, that I'm presenting on are kind of a package deal. So, I'm going to do a brief summary of this whole project and what led us to where we're at. So, this is a request for a closing, for a partial closing of the right-of-way on South Duncan. The address is 1206, let me make it big. All right. Here we go. As you can see, it's just this little portion on 1206. So, how this came about, we'll do an aerial. It's at 12th and Duncan. As you're aware, we have a CDBG grant-funded stormwater project that is going there at the 12th and Duncan intersection. So, it's going across. So, at 1202, we've asked for an easement, and it has, I think it was last month or the month before, we had an encroachment agreement with the owner at 1202 for the fence, and as part of it, which is the next item, is for the closing of the right-of-way there to the east as well. So with that, 1206 was asked if they want to go ahead and are good with the closing, since we would just have that little square. So that's how this portion came about and being presented to you tonight. This allows for, originally, the right-of-way was at 50 feet, now it's going to be at 40. Are there any questions for staff?
Can you pull that last picture back up again?
Yes.[335.72][335.72](laughing)
Okay, so just so we're clear, there's two here that, it's the same, the same section of easement or right-of-way?
Yes, well, yeah, two different property owners, so that's why it's being presented separately.
Separately.
So, it is along South Duncan to make it continuous with the 40 feet. This is just, yeah, making it.
So there's that square, is the only one on this property?
Yes, on this property for this public hearing, and then the next one's going to be the one to the north.
Understood. Counselors, any questions for Jaclyn? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak in the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask, Jaclyn, what is the recommendation on this item?
Recommendation is approve the closing request.
Thank you. Counselors, any further questions? Is there recommended action or action on the item?
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on 1206 South Duncan, please vote. With a vote of 5 to 0, that item is approved. That takes us to 7B, which has received public comment regarding a request from Ikram and Wendy Mohudin to, excuse me?
Mohudin.
Thank you. Mohudin, to close a portion of the right-of-way near 1202 South Duncan, CC-22-193. We have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Jaclyn?
All right. As stated before, this is part of the stormwater agreement with this property owner, was to have this closing to include their fence. This was piggybacked with that encroachment agreement. As just stated before, this allows it to be 40 feet instead of 50 and make it continuous throughout South Duncan. Are there any questions?
Any questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. I assume we have the same recommendation on this one?
Yes.[457.91][457.91](laughing)
Counselors, any action?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation on 1202, please vote. With a vote of 5 to 0, that item is approved as well. Thank you. All right. Item 8, General Orders, is, Item A is a Block 34 Redevelopment Project Update, and we have a couple folks here, I think Steve Urbey and Jim, are you going to also present? Come on up.
So I think we're here to actually ask you if we can name the block. In our agreement, we were given the right to lay around with it, and you need to give us the final approval, and the name we've come up with is Block 34. So, it's, we have some sketches we'd like to show you. Have we got those up?
(inaudible).
There they are.
Boom, there we go.
Okay, so, we've hired a design firm out of Tulsa that's working on all the signage for the block, and this is one of the ones that Jim and I liked, and do you notice why it's Block 34? The 34 is in a block, okay.[543.41][543.41](laughing) But, to make that a little clearer, it says Block on the side. This is not really the final design, but this is one that we liked the look at, we thought it looked modern, and it seemed to fit with the architecture that we have on the block. And so, the illustration on the right side is what would be on each corner of the block. And then if you look in the little section that's below the 34, that would be a kind of a cabinet with a face on it that could be opened, so there could be flyers put in there for different events and things like that on each corner of the block, so people could see what's going on, what the coming attractions were, and this sort of thing. So, the design language is basically the same, and it can possibly be lit from the inside. If you see the white part of the inside, we're looking at that, to actually have lighting inside of it, so it will have like, kind of a nice glow in the evening and at night. And we've got some other potential items on the block that would use this same design if they're funded, which would be basically highlighting some local musicians that have been successful over a number of years, and because the block is basically about music and sound and the stage and having fun. So, anyway, this is the presentation, and so I think, right now, Jim's going to give us a little update, but we would like to see if we can have approval to call the block, Block 34.
Well, I don't know that we have, we can't take any action on the item tonight, and I'm not sure that we actually have to vote one way or the other.
If you need to.
We're happy that you're here to let us know.
Yeah.
What, I'm excited about that, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but I think, for better or worse, that's what the block has been called for 10 years.
Yeah.
I think people here know what that is, and I actually think it's kind of a unique moniker for folks from outside, it's not going to get confused with other places. And honestly, it's historical in the sense that, I mean, it's called Block 34 from the original plating of the town. This is the numbered blocks, right? And so it has that connection all the way back to the opening of Stillwater. So I think it's, I think it's exciting, and I think that the graphics and the signage will only enhance that, so.
Yeah, and it's the name that was started out with, you know, when this project started some years ago with Block 34, so I think this brings some closure.
Sure.
You know, to the process there, and so we're pretty excited about it.
Excellent.
Jim's going to give you a little update on where we're at. We've been working pretty much continuously on this project.
Yep. Yeah, we're in the middle of, we're in the middle of design review. The design process is going full bore. We've got landscape architect Dan Alaback, and Espinoza, Stan Espinoza is the lead architect on the project. Ghost Associates is doing engineering, they are going full bore on this. We had a 35% design review with city operating staff, we had Sean Allen from the Community Center providing guidance on the technical aspect, oh, sorry. We met with Sean Allen, Vernon Hall, Mark White, and others from the city to make sure that thing's laid out so we can operate it. And this is the time to make those design modifications to enable efficient operation of the block and to deliver what we want it to deliver. And they provided some really great comments that are going to be incorporated in the design. And that was about, that review was about two weeks ago. We're progressing on with detailed design, and in late, the last week of this month, we're going to have another detailed review with the city planning group and engineers to make sure we're still on track to get this thing done and approved as soon as possible. In parallel, I know the city's looking at some infrastructure improvements to enable the, enhance the quality of the block and the experience downtown, and so we're working closely with them. We met with Candy Starring last week to look at opportunities to match up some infrastructure improvements with the block project, so we're looking forward to an exciting progression and efficient progression of the block, better to get it out on contract as soon as possible. So, thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve. We very much appreciate the work you all are doing, and the support, Steve, from you and your family and Kicker, so looking forward to seeing more.
Yep.
All right. That takes us to Item 9. Resolutions. Resolution CC-2022-30, this is a resolution of support for the appointment of William X. Joyce, that's me, to the District 5 seat on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League, declaring said appointment to be for the benefit of the City of Stillwater and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be for the public purpose. This is, there's an open seat on the Oklahoma Municipal League's Board of Directors. District 5 is the district that our city is in, with a number of other communities in our area. I was approached to apply for that board seat, and I've been involved with the Municipal League on their Legislative Committee and on the Mayor's Council of Oklahoma Board as well. I'm really excited about the work that they're doing to help represent cities and towns in our state, to move forward the goal of local control and small government in our area, and would be honored to sit on their board if they so choose, and so this resolution is something that's required from our community or from our board as part of their application process.
All right. I move to adopt Resolution CC-2022-30.
Second.
Motion and a second on the resolution, please vote. Resolutions approved with a vote of 5 to 0. Item 9B is Resolution CC-2022-31, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, a municipal corporation, to sign and issue an election proclamation calling for a general election and a runoff election if needed in the City of Stillwater. This is our election, our election resolution. We have two seats, Seat 1 and 2, which will be up for election next spring, and this is the resolution that would set that election on February?
14th, 2023.
With a potential runoff on April 4th if needed. The filing dates would be December 5th, 6th, and 7th of this year, so next month. I think there were some changes from the?
Yes, Mayor, just a few changes to the election proclamation which are attached to the resolution in the agenda packet. Because the general election is two seats in one office, in order to be perfectly clear, the changes being made are in the first section, general election, the change is being made so that it reads, "In the event that more than one person files as candidate for either office to be filled, a general election shall be held on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, for the purpose of electing members of the City Council for each such office. One member of the City Council of the City of Stillwater designated as counselor number one for a term of four years; one member of the City Council of the City of Stillwater designated as counselor number two for a term of four years. The candidate receiving a majority of all votes cast for each office shall be elected." The next change is in the section titled ipso facto election, this is just a formatting change, a colon to follow, election. In the section runoff election, again, just to be clear that there are two offices, it shall read, "For each office, comma, should no candidate receive a majority of all the votes cast, then the two candidates receiving the highest number of votes cast for that office shall proceed to a runoff election to be held on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023." And with those changes, I think it makes it more clear that in each of those instances, there are two seats, two separate candidate filings for such a position of members on the City Council.
And thank you to Counselor Clark for helping point out some of those ambiguities in that language. Any questions about the changes? Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2022-31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. The resolution passes with a vote of 5 to 0. Ordinances, Item 10, on second read, we have ordinance number 3510, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 603 West High Point Drive from commercial shopping to commercial general. Counselors?
Move to adopt ordinance 3510.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. The resolution passes with a vote of 5 to 0. Ordinances, Item 10, on second read, we have ordinance number 3510, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 603 West High Point Drive from commercial shopping to commercial general. Counselors?
Move to adopt ordinance 3510.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of 5 to 0, ordinance 3510 is now adopted. Reports from officers and boards, Ms. Carnley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. McNichol?
Thank you, Mayor. One item, we are looking for a person to fill the vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. The Board consists of five members and is impaired by city code to conduct hearings and render decisions on matters of appeals, variances, and special exceptions to the zoning ordinance. The Board is considered to be quasi-judicial in that its decisions can only be overturned by district court. Term length is three years. If you would like to fill out an online application, please go to stillwater.org/citizenboards, or, for additional information, contact Assistant to the City Manager Patty Ospis at 405-742-8209.
Thank you very much.
Important position.
It is, it is. And for those of you out there who are interested in what happens here at the city, I think we've got some more of our leadership Stillwater folks here today. Hint, hint. Some important boards for those of you who are involved and engaged in our city. All right. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Throughout November, Stillwater residents and patrons will see holiday decorations popping up around town. It's my favorite thing to talk about. I know. The opening weekend for Mary Main Street will be Friday, November 25th. We're doing a tree lighting on the Payne County Courthouse lawn this year. Block 34, thank you for not overthinking the name, it's a great name, is, because of the construction, we are doing some adjustments to Mary Main Street, so no retail domes this year, but the large dome will be on the empty lot north of the Community Center and south of the Sharar Museum. We'll have Santa's house there as well. The festivities will be the four weekends between Thanksgiving and Christmas. We'll have free horse carriage rides, activities and classes in the large dome, holiday lights set to music at Chris Salmon Plaza, Santa and sensitive Santa from the North Pole, and much more. Also, please plan to attend the Stillwater Holiday Parade on December 1st, the first Thursday of December, on Main Street in downtown. The parade will begin at 7:00 PM. The theme is Christmas Vacation. And if you'd like to be in the parade, please complete the packet online at stillwater.org and return them to Stephanie Kinder at the Stillwater Community Center before 4:30 on Thursday, November 17th. And please remember to support your local businesses for your holiday gifts and foods. We just can't thank you enough for staying in Stillwater and enjoying the holidays. We've got a lot of fun things happening, so you can always find information at stillwater.org and at visitstillwater.org.
Excellent. I can't believe we're already talking about Christmas, but we are, so.
I know, I know. Vice Mayor, is all of the Mary Main Street information also at those two?
Yes. Visit Stillwater, yes. Also, the Mary Main Street Facebook page, that will catch up, but yes, visit Stillwater and stillwater.org will have all that information for Mary Main Street as well. Yep.
Counselor Hawkins?
And I did notice there are already Christmas lights up at Chris Salmon Plaza on Main Street, so.
Yes. The goal is to get them up before downtown Stillwater Open House this weekend, so lights will be going on.
Fabulous.
Yep.
Possible severe winter weather is just around the corner. Be sure to have multiple ways to receive warnings and alerts to help protect you and your family. Follow the City of Stillwater Emergency Management, that's S-T-W-S-E-M-A on Facebook and Twitter for important updates and information. Director Rob Hill and his team continuously monitor the weather and remain in communication with the National Weather Service out of Norman. Their social media pages are an additional reliable resource for the latest weather update.
I know we're all eagerly awaiting the premiere of Rob Hill driving around in the snow.[1376.26][1376.26](laughing) It's my favorite TV show during the winter. Counselor Chalowski?
Planning a trip? Fly through Stillwater Regional Airport. Enjoy free parking and short security lines and our new upgraded, larger planes with first-class amenities, all when you fly slow. Flying close to home is also a great way to support your local economy this holiday season. Book flights using airport code SWO@AA.com. Mayor and I had the opportunity to be on the same flight out of Dallas the other day. I was the last person on the airplane, was so grateful that I was able to run, make that flight, and be so close to home.
I didn't, I didn't know you were supposed to be on the flight, I would have just made sure they all did.
Hold the plane.
You did make it. You did make it. Counselor Clark?
City offices will be closed on Thursday, November 24, and Friday, November 25 for the Thanksgiving holiday. Trash and recycling will be collected as usual, however, yard waste will not be collected on those dates. As always, set your carts out by 6:00 AM because collection routes can vary. The Convenience Collection Center will also be closed Thursday and Friday, it will be open normal hours on Saturday.
And I would also just add to remind everybody tomorrow's Election Day, and everybody needs to roll out and vote.
Yep.
Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you for that reminder, I just wrote it down so that I would remember to say the same thing, but I'm glad that you did.
I was going to if you did.[1469.11][1469.11](laughing)
The city manager let me know, I think we had 40, almost 4,400 people voted early at the library, and I was one of those folks who voted early at the library. It was very well-run.
Yes.
Very smooth, in and out, and we appreciate the Payne County Election Board's hard work and the library's hard work in making that possible.
And that is a terrific turnout for early voting.
Yes, that's true.
There were years when I was on the school board, that was a whole-school election.
Sure.
That was way less than a whole-school election. I mean, 2,400, 2,500 would be typical sometimes.
Polls are open 7 to 7. You can go to the OK Voter Portal, you can just Google OK Voter Portal if you need to figure out where you vote, what your precinct is. Just put your name in, your birthday, it'll tell you what precinct to go to tomorrow, because tomorrow is not voting at the library, tomorrow is voting at your precinct, wherever it is.
And sample ballots are available there, too.
Sample ballots are there, too, yep, and they'll tell you exactly the sample ballot that you will receive. All right. My reminder for you all is that we do have available funding assistance for those affected by COVID-19. If you've had difficulty making utility or rent payments, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the City of Stillwater and Our Daily Bread may be able to help. The Funding Assistance Program will be available until all funds are dispersed, so please So please go to www.ourdailybreadstillwater.org to apply and for more information. All right. That takes us to item 13 on the agenda, which is the appointment of a city councilor to serve as an ex officio member of the Audit Committee. I failed to contact one of our city counselors today to ask him to be the ex officio member of the Audit Committee. So if this is out of line, you just let me know, but I'm going to nominate Counselor Clark to be our ex officio Audit Committee.
Second.
He's way too quick. He's a financial guy. All right. We have a motion and a second to nominate Counselor Clark to that position. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you for your willingness to serve an additional role during the Audit Committee. Nothing else on the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the City Council meeting. Please vote. We voted five to zero. The Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I think I'm going to call SUA, just because there's not much on this one. We'll get it done real quick and then we'll get to the CETA. So I will call, at this point, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for November 7th, 2022, to order. We have a consent docket. Trustees, is there action on the consent item?
Move to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent docket's approved five to zero. There are no other items on the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. And now I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for November 7th, 2022. Is there action on this consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Approved with a vote of five to zero. Item five is general orders. And we have Justin Hazard here to give us a Chamber of Commerce fiscal year 2023 first quarter economic development report. Welcome.
Thank you for letting me be here this evening. Representing the Chamber of Commerce as the current chair, I'll be the outgoing chair at the end of this year. And it's a pleasure to be able to report on behalf of the chamber. We are in the middle of an executive search, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit later on. But let me, if I can, touch on some of the numbers. And you'll have to excuse me if I don't have the depth that you guys are accustomed to receiving on this report out, so I'll do my best. RFPs of the last quarter, we received 15 through our regional partnerships. And of 12 of those, we are eligible to participate. Of those 12, there are a couple of them that I'd like to highlight specifically. One of them would use the current Armstrong facility. We're in a second round of consideration, passing back additional information and having ongoing discussion about that particular project, could have massive impact for our community here. And multiple site visits with that particular project. There are also other interests at Commerce Place, the industrial park on the north end of town, as well as we have an interested party to expand their facilities into Stillwater, occupying about 21 acres in that park as well. So several projects in the works. That last project, 21 acres, would be a $30 million facility. About 30 to 50 employees, full-time and part-time. And we're now in kind of the final phases of discussion with that organization there. Would also like to recap where we are on USA Rare Earth. That project is, in terms of the rehabilitation of that building, going very well. It's on budget and on target for all of the work that's going into that project. Anticipated 2023 midsummer is the go-live date. So things are moving positively in that direction there. Also, on the Remote Worker Program, we call it Make My Move. That's the name of the company that is headlining that for us. Continues to be successful. We've had about, on average, 12 leads per week. And since inception of that program in July, we've had 12 relocations to the Stillwater area. And some of those with trailing spouses and families coming with them. So the economic impact is very positive for that. I'd also like to call attention to Reagan Mitchell. She's behind me now. She has just joined the chamber as our Economic Development Coordinator. Very happy to have her here. She's a Stillwater native. You might have ran into her before. She's been around for quite a while, very well-connected in the community and very happy to have her join the chamber as our Economic Development Coordinator. Lastly, on the entrepreneurship front, coming up next week is Global Entrepreneurship Week. So that is celebrated around the world. This is an event that's been going on for a couple of decades. And the US is one of the last countries to take this on as a national initiative to raise awareness and advocacy for entrepreneurship. We have events scheduled throughout the week here in Stillwater. Those are hosted by Meridian Technology Center as well as the Riaada Center for Entrepreneurship at the Spears School of Business at Oklahoma State. At Meridian Technology Center, the incubator is going very well. It's got a very vibrant culture. We have 85% of the incubator space is occupied by startups here in Stillwater. We have 16 companies in there and on any given day, an average of about 50 employees total within that program participating as incubator clients. New business registrations for Stillwater for this particular zip code, year to date is 401. And with an average of 40 new businesses registered every month in the Stillwater area. And that tends to be on track with a community of our size. We are beating ENID on that measurement, so that's fantastic. So we're doing really well in that area. Lastly, on the executive search update, we are reaching out to our constituents, our members, our stakeholders in identifying what is the optimum pathway for the organization to reshape how we do economic development. We've always been supportive and appreciative of the city allowing us to do what we do. And I think that we can continue to improve that function. One of the ways that we would like to improve that is a reorganization of how we function as a chamber. You have general Chamber of Commerce activities as well as economic development activities. We're not tearing the entire house apart, but really taking a hard look as to how we align those duties and ensuring that we can continue to fulfill our obligation to the city on economic development. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions or respond to any comments you might have.
Thank you, Justin. Trustees, any questions? Nothing?
Fantastic.
I would just want to say, I think I've said this to you personally, but wanted to say publicly that Reagan and I accompanied one of those site visits, or I accompanied Reagan on one of those site visits to the Armstrong plant. Really spectacular job, I think, on her like second or third day in the position. So we're happy to have you at the chamber and appreciate your work. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the CETA meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. And that concludes our meetings for the evening.